Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Friday Coffee. Go ahead and get started. I can see that a few people are still joining us, but it is shortly past nine o'clock. So, welcome to Friday Coffee. My name is Susan Neal Doughty, and I am the Director of Membership and Special Events at the Chamber. And Friday Coffee is one of the programs that I put together. Glad that you guys are joining us, and we have a great program today. So, let's go ahead and get started. See, I'll advance my screen here. Maybe I waited too long. There we go. Just a few things to note. Everybody is muted right now. That just helps us to prevent any background noise that you may or may not even be aware of. But if you do have questions for our speaker, just put that in the chat window, and we will have a Q and A at the end of the session. Also, we do ask that you do not record or reuse any of the information in this program. We will record this, and we will put it on our website for you to review later, so that you don't make any recordings without permission. So with that, I'm going to move ahead. First of all, I do want to thank our Friday Coffee, Williams Keeper, and also the Cumulus Radio. With Williams Keeper being our sponsor today, we do have Jeremy Morris joining us, and he is a CPA with Williams Keeper. Many people know Jeremy. He's actually led a few of our Friday Coffee Zoom meetings, and I'm going to let Jeremy speak to it.
Sure. Thank you, Susan. Happy to be here today. Happy to be here in particular since Harry is here. I know most of the people on this call know this, but you know, in his previous life, Harry was a partner here for a number of years, and I had the good fortune of working with him early on in my career. And I knew things were going to work out well whenever he pulled me into his office pretty early on and told me he realized I was from Miller County, and said he'd give me a pass for being from Miller County as long as I gave him a pass for being from Osage County. So, we had a little bit of an agreement there. But no, thank you for having us. What we wanted to talk about is, you know, something that we're proud of at Williams Keepers, you know, in addition to all the traditional services we provide, you know, you think of tax, audit, accounting services, payroll. You know, we have enough expertise and are large enough here to be able to provide other type of value-added services, whether that's business planning and consulting, estate planning, employee benefits, business valuations and the like. And so because of that, too, we're also trying to find ways to get information out to people. In addition to the conversations we're having with our clients kind of on a daily basis, how do we get information about these opportunities and planning opportunities out? So, something I've been involved with over the last few years has been our Business Owner Strategy Series, where we, you know, we kind of plan on maybe half a dozen times a year or more, depending on if something comes up, current event-wise. Have seminars, which are now, you know, virtual. Hopefully, God willing, we'll be able to do both in-person and virtual at some point this year. Free seminars where we talk about a variety of issues that are impactful to business owners. And so if you think about last year, kind of the thing that we spent a lot of our attention on, you know, whenever everything went sideways back in March related to COVID, we saw this big relief bill coming down the pipeline through Congress. And so we knew that was going to be something that impacted our clients. And so we kind of changed course a little bit during our busy season, got a team of individuals together to do a deep dive into that. And as Susan said, I've done some presentations with the Chamber on that. But a lot of our Business Owner Strategy Series was looking at kind of that deep dive into the aid available to their businesses and helping them navigate that. You know, so since, you know, March, we've been kind of walking with our clients, working with them to kind of help them disseminate the information in these bills, whether it's, you know, Families First Act, the CARES Act is a big one, and, you know, how that impacts them and helping them optimize that. So, wanted to give a little plug. So, you know, as you guys know, next, well, end of December, we finally got the third relief bill passed. It was signed into law, I think, December 27th, and this is massive. You know, it's an appropriations bill for the year, so it has a lot of other information. But it also has two or three sections that are additional COVID relief and additional tax provisions associated with, you know, in some instances related to COVID relief and other instances unrelated. A lot of information. I think it's a 5,600-page bill. So, we are going to have our next session next Tuesday, so January 12th. It's going to be at 9:00 AM, free webinar online. Mark Gingrich and I, if you guys have been on any of those, he and I have been the two that have led a lot of these presentations. We'll be talking through that Appropriations Act of 2021 with particular emphasis on, you know, PPP, old changes to the existing program, second draw loans for businesses that qualify, and employee retention credits. So again, a lot of information, 9:00 AM, probably to 10:30, although, you know, we tend to answer questions. Will, you know, probably stay on as long as need be to answer those. But again, if anyone's interested, the information's there. Or you can contact me, Susan, and the folks at the Chamber, have my information or shoot me a chat, and I can answer any questions you have. But happy to be here today, Susan.
Thank you, Jeremy. We appreciate that sponsorship. It's great information and that you've shared with our members, opportunity to attend your seminar. So, thanks, Jeremy. Friday Coffee sponsors, if your business would like to be a Friday Coffee sponsor, you can do that as well, like Williams Keeper. We work with Rochelle Weaver at Cumulus. Rochelle, are you on the call? I'm not sure if she's joining us. Okay, Rochelle had a meeting at 8:00. She wasn't sure if that was going to be...
I am here. Susan, I'm sorry. I am here.
There you go, Rochelle. Hey!
Sorry that I couldn't unmute myself fast enough. Happy Friday, everyone. Yeah, we're excited that Williams Keeper is a sponsor for Friday Coffee. That means not only does he get to do this wonderful presentation with everyone here, but we can catch up at a later date, and then he'll have 25 free ads to run on any of our radio stations of his choosing. We have seven different stations that talks to close to 200,000 people each week. So, we're excited to be a sponsor of the Friday Coffee. It continues to be a great resource for the businesses that are on the Friday Coffee.
Thank you, Rochelle. We appreciate that partnership that we formed to provide this service and a benefit for our members and sponsorship. So, we do have a Friday Coffee every month. You know, we're continuing to have them virtually, and it's still a marketing opportunity for you. So, if you want to reserve a Friday Coffee sponsor, February is available. So, just reach out to us and let us know. Thanks, Rochelle.
Thank you.
I'm going to go on with our program. And first, I want to welcome some of our new members that we have to the Chamber. This month, since we've had our Friday Coffee the last time, Integrative Medicine, sorry, Advanced Integrative Medicine Clinic, Dr. Chris Link, Midstate Landscaping LLC, Eric Cosmaka, Van Leeu Service Center, and Van Leeu, oh, sorry, Van Leeu Plumbing. Justin Van Leeu, welcome to those new members. Next, I want to announce our social media forum, and Natalie Newville on the call. So, Natalie?
Absolutely. So, every month, we do social media forum. Right now, it is virtual, so it's very easy to hop on from work. Kenny, my husband and I both present at it most of the time. This month, we're talking about how to create engaging emails, so how to build your email list and ways to keep people on your list so that they actually open them. It's really great. We have a Facebook group, too, with a bunch of the different Chamber members where we kind of share ideas and reminders, that kind of thing. So, it's a great community, and so I think even if you have a dedicated marketer, it's great to have them join because they can add a lot of expertise. But especially if your business, if you don't have a dedicated marketer and it's somebody's, like, other duties as assigned is your social media, this is definitely a group that you want them to plug into. So, we meet the third Thursday of the month at 8:00. Like I said, January, it'll be in Zoom, and we will reevaluate every month like everyone else is doing. So...
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Natalie, to you and Kenny for providing that. So, we look forward to that. Another thing the Chamber is looking forward to is the Chamber's annual meeting, Focus 2021. This is an opportunity for us to recognize our outgoing Chairman, Darren Heckman, and provide a year-end review and an outlook on our 2021 with Jeff Davidson. We also have recognition of our outgoing officers and directors and a presentation of our Chairman's Award. So, that is Thursday, January 28th. You should have all received an email encouraging you to put that on your calendar. It will be Facebook Live at 11:00 from 11:00 to 11:30. It's our Chamber Annual Meeting. Still looking forward to that opportunity for us to be together and have outlook for our and the year to come, and really appreciate our board members and officers for their service to the Chamber and the community. So, encourage you to attend Facebook Live Focus 2021, the Chamber's annual meeting. Speaking of events on your calendar, if you have an event, please, we encourage you to post that to our community calendar. This is a member benefit. It is a clearing for, we have many great events on our community, and we want you to share the news and give you more exposure for that. And also encourage you to, you know, use that service as you plan your events. So, if you would like to post your events on our website for our community calendar, KRCG also adds additional promotion. They announce it on their daybook. This is a free service for our members, and we encourage you to... Another thing to remind you to shop local. We are continuing our J.C. Bemo Chamber Marketplace with Love What's Local. Valentine's Day is right around the corner, and it's an opportunity for you to shop and support our local businesses and restaurants. They have ways that you can shop online or pick up or in-person, and we encourage you to do so. So, as a reminder, we're going to do a call-out. Chamber members will offer Sweetheart Deals. It's an opportunity for you to save or just to know about the great opportunities we have in our community to shop local. It does make a difference, and we want to just remind you and give you that opportunity to do so. So, Love What's Local, Sweetheart Deals coming for February. With that, I'm going to turn the program over to Missy Bono, because she is going to introduce our speaker for today. So, Missy?
Very good. Thank you, Susan, and happy Friday to everyone, and happy 2021. Very excited to be into the new year, and I'm really excited today to introduce Harry Otto. Harry and I have known each other for many, many years, and so, welcome, Harry. I see that you're in your new office right across the street at the County Commission Office. So, welcome.
Thank you, Missy.
So, I just want to briefly introduce Harry. I think a lot of the now 56 participants on the line know Harry. And first of all, I just want to say congratulations, Harry, on your election. That was a very highly contested race, and it made it very exciting for us on the sidelines to watch the race. So, congratulations first and foremost.
Thank you.
So, like Jeremy talked about earlier, Harry has a vast career in Cole County and Jefferson City. So, I thought what we would do first, Harry, is, like you're in an interview, can you tell us a little bit about yourself and a little bit about your history, and just a little bit about your background? We know you're from Osage County, and so, again, that's part of our MSA, so that's one of us. So, just tell us a little bit about your background, would you?
Sure, Missy. Thanks for having me on. My campaign material was, I wanted to be sure it said "born in Cole County." So, I was born at St. Mary's Hospital in Cole County, so that makes me a native, I think. But my mother and father lived near Lynn in Osage County. So, I grew up there, went to the St. George Elementary School, Lynn High. I'm a Lynn High Wildcat. And as soon as I got out of high school, I went off to Mizzou. I had an older sister and two younger brothers, and I always have to admit that I had brothers named Richard and Thomas. And if you put Richard, Thomas, and Harry together, you know what you get. You get Tom Dick. So, after Mizzou, I went to work right away with a public accounting firm in Columbia by the name of Williams Keepers Oliver Paint and Rackers, later shortened to Williams Keepers and later shortened to WK in most circles. And I spent a career there. I was interrupted by a stint with the Army Reserve, a six-year stint, but of course, not all six of those years were active duty. And at one point, Mary Kay, my wife of many, many years, a Jefferson City native, she grew up here. She wanted to get back here to home, and so we came to Jefferson City, and I went to work for the Department of Revenue. I left public accounting, stayed there about three years, came back to public accounting to the Jefferson City Office of WK, and spent a total of 39 tax seasons with Williams Keepers, one way or another. Great career there, but then I was invited to be the deputy. I took advantage of that situation, spent some time with Tom Schweick as the auditor, and moved over to the Capitol after Tom was gone, and spent some time with oversight over there, went over to DED, Economic Development, as their Legislative Director, and then drifted back into Governor's Office for a short stint, and then decided to do this. I've always followed county government as well as state government. You know, if you live in this town long enough, you get attracted to the political environment here. I think it's a higher level of political environment than it is in most counties in Missouri. So, I ran for office in a year that was a difficult year to campaign. I tell people that I couldn't shake hands, I couldn't kiss babies. And since Missouri is a castle doctrine state, if you go door-to-door with a mask on, you could get shot on the porch, and the shooter would be probably found innocent because of the masked man that tried to get in. But I did it with letters. I started with my golf buddy letter to my golf buddies, and it worked. So, I just expanded it until I wrote out, I wrote 840 letters. Got great response, was able to raise money, did a direct mail campaign, and defeated a two-term incumbent in a three-way primary. And I could be proud of that, except 60% of the voters didn't vote for me. So, I had 39%, but in a three-way, that could win. So, that's how I got here. I've watched commission meetings for years. I participated in the commission, well, I've been in the commission meetings since I was elected. I was sitting as just an observer. And so that brings us to where we are today. And I've been here since Monday was the first working day of this term. And yesterday, we passed the budget. And I'll be, I'll talk about some other things, Missy. If you want to lead me into some of the things we discussed, I'd be happy to follow.
I guess I'll back up a little bit, Harry. What really led you to even want to run for office? I mean, that's a pretty steep climb, and to beat an incumbent was pretty amazing, honestly. So, what even motivated you to run for office?
I guess, you know, I just started to, I needed something to do. I have failed retirement about three times, and now maybe four. I need something to do, and I don't know, I was just attracted to government, local government, especially that's where you really touch people on a daily basis, and your actions make differences. And since the commission meetings are all broadcast and they can be reviewed on YouTube, I looked into those, and I was really, I was disappointed with the actions of the commission on a number of issues. I was disappointed in the unprofessionalism of the officeholders. Cole County is a first-class county by definition of a state statute. It ought to be a first-class county on how it operates and how it performs and how it's viewed. And I thought, maybe I could bring some of my experience and background and make that happen and just run a better shop.
So, would you say, were there any surprises? Or what are some of the things that surprised you the most during your campaign, would you say?
Well, during the campaign, no, I don't think I had any surprises. I mean, COVID was, you know, a shot in the forehead, so the surprise was I didn't get to have fundraisers. Matter of fact, I was working for the Governor's Office back in January, February, March of 2020. And the Governor, I think it was the second last day of March, I had a letter on my desk signed by the Governor that said, "You are essential. You are critical to the mission. We've got this COVID thing going, and we need you." That was on, I think, a Monday. On Tuesday, he came into my office and said, "Hey, I've got nothing for you to do." So, that was a, I said, "Okay, I tell you, Governor, if I'm not working for you, I'm working on my campaign." And he said, "Oh, that's great. When is your first fundraiser?" And I said, "Well, you tell me." You know, you're sort of shut, he didn't shut down the state like some of the other governors did. But that's when I went to work on my letter campaign. And he was one of the first ones to call me on the night of the primary. And I missed his call because I was talking to someone else. And when I called back, I got his voicemail, which said, "Okay, now you're elected, and you won't take a call from the Governor." So, there. And then, just to be, you know, just to get back focused, the first piece of correspondence I received here in the office was from the Governor on Monday of this week. And I thought, oh, this is going to be great. He's going to have something nice to say about his old friend, Harry Otto. But it just said, "Dear County Office Holder." I think he had to send out about, you know, I won't say a thousand of these, and it was signed by a machine. So, it brought me back to reality that I'm just one of three here or one of a dozen or more elected officials here that he had to congratulate.
Very cool. So, I think you do bring a very interesting background to this office with your auditor's experience, and then with your private accounting experience, then also with your economic development experience. I know I read in the paper today, you finalized the budget yesterday. So, can you talk a little bit about the budget process and some things? I know you received a lot of CARES funding as well, and we'll get to that, too. And I know that the CARES money really increased the overall county budget. But can you kind of talk about the budget and the process and some things that did get approved in the budget?
You bet. Yes. The budget process for a first-class county, and it's similar for second, third, and fourth-class counties and charter counties, is, you know, you ask the various directors within the county and the other officeholders to come up with a wish list in September, and then the commission starts to fine-tune that on December 1 in our case. So, back on December 1, they weren't called hearings. They were just meetings at the commission for public to view and be there. So, we started working on the budget, and I participated. And I will tell you that my predecessor, Chris Shepherdley, was very cordial with me. We made eye contact often during those discussions, and he would raise his eyebrows, and I would lower mine, and that kind of reacted with respect to, or maybe some we often agreed. So, I had some little indirect input in the budget process. We go through all of those things and fine-tune it a bit. The auditor actually fine-tunes it before it even comes to the commission, so she does a good job. Kristen Bearhorst, our auditor, is excellent. And we roll that down, and then yesterday, we voted on the budget. We pretty much made decisions all through the process, and there wasn't too much to discuss yesterday. One or two items that pop up that we had to reconcile. The CARES thing, it's a big deal. The CARES, the national, the US government sent the state tons of money. The state carved it up by county, the state treasurer did, and said, "Cole County, here's about $9.1 or $9.2 million. Spend it wisely." And so to spend it wisely, the commission made a determination to hire professionals to assist, and they've selected BKD, a fine CPA firm headquartered in Springfield. And they don't work cheap, but they put out a good product. So, they're going to get paid somewhere around $280,000 for administering, helping administer a $9 million budget, about 3%, I believe. And so, we start taking applications from places and decided to spend out of different buckets. And I could tell you that out of the $9 million, about $1,000,000.4 went to the schools. Most of it to public schools, most of it right here in the Jefferson City area, but also to Blair Oaks and Eugene and Russellville, as they said, "We have incurred costs due to COVID." So, that was the original one, is these costs that you're asking to be reimbursed for have to be related to COVID, and had it not been for COVID, you wouldn't have these costs. So, we did the schools. City stepped up, and they asked for a lot of money, and they got it. Probably Jefferson City, about 1.2 million of the nine. Then the hospitals chimed in, of course, and it was something in probably in excess of what the medical slash health, maybe $2 million spent there internally, just for the county itself. It's going to be somewhere around $4 million when we do all the accounting. And most of that is for the Health Department and for EMS, a little bit for the sheriff. And then the courts, they asked for some money because they had to rearrange things there at the courthouse. Those are the big bucks inside the $9 million that... And well, at the last minute, too, the government, and Jeremy's familiar with this, when he said that they passed a bill on the 29th or whatever. They also changed the rules and relaxed the rules and said, "You do have till after the 30th to spend the money. You've got till the middle of June in most cases." And it doesn't really have to be for direct costs that you've incurred. In other words, they said, "If you have a health department, tell us what your health department costs were." They don't have to be specifically related to COVID. If you have an emergent, if you have an ambulance service, you can use some of those dollars. So, that's how the county was able to make its internal cost or internal reimbursement larger.
I want to get to Cole County Health, but something that I saw in the paper that's near and dear to me is one of the things that we have been working on for 18 months, two years now, is the separation of the economic development activity from the Chamber. And we have, I see Jeff Davidson's on the line. Good morning, Jeff. We had a group come over and make a presentation to the county several weeks ago. And one of the things that is important to us in the split of economic development and the Chamber is to get the county back on board with the city and this new economic development entity and all work together in partnership. And we made the request, and I know that you guys discussed that yesterday. Can you talk about that budget item and how you came to the amount that you approved?
Sure. Jeff and his crew, his group came to the commission during the budget meetings, and I think the ask was what was $175. Does that sound right, Jeff?
$185.
$185, I'm sorry. $185.
To mirror what the city's contribution had already been approved.
City did $185. The ask of the county was $185. Outside, they were going to grab $300 from other sources. And the prior year's expense or budgeted amount for that kind of thing might have been considered to be $120 at the county level. But inside the $120 was, don't ask me how this happened, but the $120 became two buckets over time of a $60,000 lobbying contract and a $60,000 economic development contract. And had we just sat with that, that's what, the ask of $185 would have come down to 60 and, or thereabouts. And I said, "That wasn't enough. But let's do $120 for the economic development." We'll do, there's still 30 there from other sources for the lobbying. We're going to do six months of lobbying contract and then reassess in six months what we want to do with the lobbying contract. So, right now, the ask of $185 has come down to $120. So right now, the ask of 185 has, is, uh, become, has come down to 120. Uh, that's where we are. I, I wasn't going to let that be reduced more. That was going to be my position and, and, and Sam and I prevailed on the two to one.
Well, we, we thank you for your, uh, partnership and we're very much looking forward to the separation of the E D O from the chamber. Um, we have a lot of exciting things going on in that regard. Jeff, I don't know if you want to, I don't want to get off on the E D O, but, um, our next steps with the E D O will be to, now that we have city funding and the county funding, to go out to, uh, private companies, which we do have several letters of support from private companies, um, and to stand this new organization up hopefully around July 1. Jeff, did you have any comments about that before we move on to a different topic?
Nail on the head. So private funding next will be, uh, soliciting what I'll call stalking horse bids from our largest, uh, corporations here in Jefferson City. Just want to say how much I appreciate the partnership with, uh, Harry and, and helping us get that through is a, a big win. So thank you, Harry, for, uh, uh, helping us spearhead that.
I am excited about, um, the city and the county and private investors all coming back together to partner for our community. I think it'll be, uh, make us much stronger, uh, going forward. So can we back up a little bit, Harry? And, um, you mentioned Cole County Health Department. I saw on the news last night, there's some information about vaccinations and the dissemination of vaccinations and phase 1A, 1B, 1C. Can you talk a little bit about that for us?
I, I'd be happy to tell you what I know, but I really don't know much. We don't rely on the health department director and, uh, I mean, she stays on top of it. But I guess it's just an evolving situation. Here in Cole, it's my understanding that the hospitals, uh, did some, uh, vaccinations, uh, more than a week ago, I believe. I did hear by over, just kind of easing in on the conversation, uh, the KF region reported that their, their first round of 700 vaccinations were done there at the hospital to workers and a, and a few volunteers. And out of the 700, uh, 700 vaccinations, they had one reaction, a, a rash. So that, that, that was good news. Now, how this rolls out next, uh, we were at the county, we were kind of, we were disappointed that they didn't include first responders in the, in the, I guess you'd call them the 1A class. But now my understanding is they, they, they've been pulled into the 1A class so that the folks who, who might be coming, uh, to, to, uh, our neighbors and fellow citizens and pick up, uh, pick up folks and take them to the hospital in the ambulance, those, those people will be vaccinated. Have been or will be soon. Other healthcare providers outside of the hospitals like, uh, like dentists and, uh, chiropractors and, and whatever, uh, general practitioners who have their own offices. I think their, their opportunity is, is going to be there. We have to have some patience and just wait in line. I'm not sure who, if, if 1A was the hospital workers and the direct healthcare, 1B might be a, you know, a spin-off of that. And then, uh, the nursing homes, though, they've been, they've been handled a separate way. It's my understanding through, uh, CVS or some other pharmacy that goes out to those places and does that thing. We have a mobile unit that I think we maybe spent $300,000 to acquire that I could see it be, becoming something like the old bookmobile. Remember how it would come in, well, and if you're a little town from, uh, Lynn like me, the bookmobile coming to town was a big deal. So maybe the, the vaccine mobile will be circulating through the county announcing its stops. One of the, the, you know, the important things is, uh, you can schedule your first vaccination, but you got to schedule the second one, too. It's a two-step approach and that second one can't be at any time. It has to be in a, in a window of, of days. So, uh, this is, this is quite a rollout of, uh, scheduling the first and scheduling the second. And if you miss the second, you, I don't know if you have to start over or what, what the deal will be, but it'll be a mess. And then when they open a vial, they just can't open the vial for a person. They got to open the vial and they get multiple doses out of there. The Pfizer is a, is, is a vaccine that has to be kept super cold. And when they begin to thaw that, that package, uh, they have to use that package within X days. Whereas the other one, uh, is, is, uh, is more like a freezing temperature. We can't even store the Pfizer at our health department because it requires super cold and we don't have the facilities to handle that.
Well, Kristy Campbell and her staff have done amazing job through this whole process and we really appreciate her leadership. And, um, just proud of, of her and her staff, uh, through this crazy time. All right, switching gears on you once again. So, um, county sales tax. We had a presentation yesterday from Roger Schwartz for Citizens for Proposition A at our Civic Progress meeting, and I see Lori Helsher on here as well. Lori Helsher, Brad Bates, and Roger Schwartz are leading that campaign, which will be in April. And we had some really good information from, from Roger. Can you, um, tell us about that and kind of what your hopes are for April? And, and where the, uh, sales tax money goes to for capital improvement?
Sure. And, and I don't, uh, I, I won't, you know, as a, as an elected official, we can't, we cannot use, uh, county, uh, taxpayer resources to, uh, to tell the folks to vote for this. We can educate the voters, so, uh, voters. So under that umbrella, uh, the, the project is H, uh, you know, actually it's the eighth one, I think. Is the eighth five-year plan perhaps? Is that where we are? So if it's the H instead of Proposition A, some have suggested it should be Proposition H. But that sounds too close to some other Hs out there that we probably wouldn't do that. But anyway, it, it would raise, uh, over a five-year period, we, we think it would raise approximately, uh, $34.5 million. And if, if we kind of go along with the road plan that's been done in the, the prior five-year plans, about 15% of that is carved off into, into county facilities and equipment. So the county kind of hangs on to 15% and uses it to, to, to do some new buildings, parks, capital equipment, computerization, that kind of thing. The, the balance, the 29.3 million, uh, is spread among other road and bridge projects, uh, to include, um, rigid, call it low-water crossings, uh, equipment replacement for the road and bridge, uh, folks, uh, safety and capacity improvements. We have, we look at, uh, sort of dangerous spots in the county with respect to bridges and, and, uh, low-water bridges and those other things. There's a, there's a co-op with the city itself where we, we jointly, um, fund projects. And it's projected that we would handle, uh, the county would put 5.5 million in that and the city would do 5.5 as well. And, and you, you can look back at some of those, I think, uh, East McCarty, uh, Old 50 West, uh, the Capitol Avenue, those have been some, uh, some joint projects. So there's going to be dollars carved out for that. We're so lucky to have Lori and Roger and, and that, that Brad, that group that are going to run this, that they're experienced with this. And, and now they're, they're going to run into the, uh, campaign, uh, fundraising that I ran into, uh, you know, under COVID. So, uh, but I'm sure they'll do a ju- good job to, to raise the money, to educate the, uh, the public. And historically, these things have received about a 70%, 70-plus percent approval. And we need 51, uh, but, um, it's not a slam dunk. It has to have some work put into it.
Um, one of the things that Roger did mention yesterday was very much a, um, social media campaign. Uh, again, with COVID, just like you said, what you experienced as well. So I'm hoping for, um, I mean, I think it'd be awesome to have a record as far as, uh, yes votes. So, um, I think that would be amazing. So thank you, Lori, that's on the line, and to Brad and to, to Roger. Um, I should have said this earlier. I kind of feel like I'm dominating the conversation. So if anybody has any questions, please just throw them up in the chat. And I know we only have about 20 minutes left, so I want to kind of prioritize a couple of things, Harry. So what do you, you have a three-year term, correct?
Four.
Four-year term, I'm sorry. Um, what do you hope to accomplish in your, in your four years? Putting you on the spot after, what is this, your fourth day on, fifth day on, uh, in office? So no pressure, but, uh, what are you hoping to accomplish in the next four years?
Among other things, I, uh, it, it would be the art, county's real estate situation. We have, uh, we have real estate we don't use. We have an unused property out on Industrial Boulevard that was once the health department, you know, now they have nice facilities out on, uh, on Truman in the old Mid-Mo Medical Foundation building. So that's an unused, uh, wasting asset that's just sitting there. We need to, we need to move that. We need to do something with it, uh, make it usable for us or make it available to the public to acquire. We, we have issues, um, you know, uh, the prior, the commission, uh, a year or two ago bought, uh, property on, on Adam Street. And it's being basically unused now except for parking. We have to make a decision and then, and then follow through on whether or not, uh, to utilize that property. I'd say the options are anywhere from a complete update to that property to, to a demolition, somewhere in between, and that's a pretty wide, uh, margin. We have a, we have a good-looking courthouse. It has nice landscaping, but it's still hard to get into. I mean, uh, if you're a wheelchair patient, you have to go around the back, um, and, and take a elevator. Two elevators are, are there, uh, in that building. Neither one of them could accommodate a, uh, a stretcher unless it's vertical. You, you, and actually, uh, under social distancing rules, I'm not sure two people could get in either one of the elevators at the same time and, and violate social distancing rules. We need to find a better way for the public to walk into the courthouse. And I don't know if that means a, a back door that's, becomes the front door. We have an old jail facility hooked onto the back that is deteriorating. We, we've got to make decisions. We've, I think over the years, we've, we've, we've studied it a lot, but now it's time for some action. And the Carnegie Building, which is just across the alley, a beautiful historic structure, uh, maybe, uh, misused. We have to look at, um, putting the assessor and collector closer together because there's a constant stream of traffic from people that went to the one office and should have gone to the other. They have to go to both. We've got to make that more convenient for the public. Over in the courthouse itself, uh, we do have a, a fifth judge now. And, uh, uh, Judge Green has agreed to vacate his, his property and, and move up a floor or two. And so that we'll have all the associate, both associate judges, we'll have two now, they're going to be on the same floor, the lower, the first floor, the, uh, which is actually the second floor of the courthouse. So, uh, you know, we're, we're working in the right direction, but I think it's, uh, at the end of a four-year term, I hope to be able to look back and say, "Well, at least we got, we got the real estate thing straightened out and everybody is signed on." And if what we haven't, uh, built or demolished, we've got solid plans and a plan to, to get that done.
I know, um, Natalie, we're interested in, um, being our neighbors, um, the building right next to us, interested in, in that property especially. So we'll be excited to see what you guys decide on, on properties in the future for, for Cole County.
Sure.
Um, so, um, I'm going to open it up. I do have a couple of questions. So, um, from Frank, what is the county doing with the port? Harry, we, you and I just talked about this yesterday. Do you have any comments about the port and what the county's hopes are for the Heartland Port Authority?
Well, uh, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit of a novice on that, although when I was in the governor's office, I certainly worked, uh, to, to get the, uh, transfer, uh, of property. And although the legislation is there, I don't think that has really happened yet. The, the conveyance has not, not occurred. I, it looks like I'm going to be the commissioner who is a, is, is going to be serving on the port authority. I haven't been to a meeting yet. I've seen that there's a meeting scheduled. I'm, I'm surprised that meetings are scheduled at the same time, commission meetings are scheduled. So we're going to a little, do a little dance there to make that happen. I, I don't know much about it yet, Missy, except I will know because I, I'm going to be the, the one, uh, representing the county. And by the way, we, the county gets to appoint someone else. And my understanding is that, that, that position is open at this point. So, you know, if somebody on this call is interested in being a, a port authority representative for the county, let me know because we'll, we, we do need someone who, who wants to actively work with that. I have visited with, uh, uh, commissioner from Callaway, uh, about other things and, but port is one of them. Roger Fisher from up there, you know, the, the Callaway is part of this, this team because it's a sort of a dual port. I believe there's going to be a south, uh, port and a north port, uh, on the Missouri River, uh, one in Callaway, one in Cole.
Yeah, that's a very long-term project and we have lots of work to do on it. But to your point, we do have a couple of board, uh, openings. So we, we will be looking for, um, some really good commissioners going forward. Lori Helsher, I'll call on you. You want to make a comment about Prop A? Lori? Are you still on the line? No, okay. Amy Rogers, there is an accessible ramp between the collector's building and the courthouse, but it has been locked for several years now. Would that be used for a more accessible entrance?
Uh, it, it could be. Uh, here's the odd thing about that. We have a, a ramp and, and my, my guess is the ramp was, was made to ADA standards in terms of the steepness of it. But when you get to the courthouse side, you've got a decision to make. Do you go up steps or down steps? So although you could come into the annex, get on an elevator, go up to the ramp, go across the ramp, and you end, you end up at a landing with steps up and steps down. I don't know what was going on back then when that decision was made to, to, uh, to make the landing or to make the courthouse end of it and between two floors. Um, I don't know. It's, it's, it's akin to, you've seen the cartoons of the railroads being built, uh, from two directions and the tracks don't meet. That's what we have here.
Our situation.
But perhaps that ramp could be reramped, uh, to the left or right of this, of the, uh, stairway over there. And, and that, that could be, that could be an answer.
Um, okay, so we're going to wrap up a little bit. Um, so in closing for you, Harry, um, and then I'm, I'm going to call on a couple of other people as well to kind of give us some, some updates. But what would you say your, just your aspirations? We talked a little bit about this, about what you wanted to accomplish during your term. But just what, you know, you mentioned that we are a, a class one county. What are your aspirations for just Jefferson City, Cole County, kind of our region going forward?
My aspirations, yeah, like, you know, I would think, being a grandparent, my aspirations or future grandparents have their grandchildren living, uh, in the community rather than, uh, their children leaving the community because the jobs weren't here, the opportunities weren't here. I would rather see, uh, the, the children who grow up here, um, end up here raising their children here. That we have, we have a lot of that, but we don't have enough of that. And I visit with friends who, who say, "Well, my children," you know, "They, they went, they went east, they went west, they went south or north." Because the, uh, their degree, uh, or their education and experience, they couldn't sell it here. I, I would hope that we could become more of a, of a community with, uh, with some continuity to it, um, family-wise.
I know a lot of people, you know, try to maybe discount the fact that kids go away, but then at some point, you know, want to come back to Jefferson City. And, um, we've had lots of conversations here at the chamber that we really need to embrace that. You know, let them, let the students, when they graduate, go off to other, um, areas. But, you know, capitalize on the fact when they want to come back after they are married and have children and have their support system still in Jefferson City. How can we grow that even further? And so I think a lot of it goes back to what you say, Harry, about, you know, you have to have opportunities in your community. You have to have jobs, good-paying jobs, um, you know, and have opportunities for our young talent to come back to Jefferson City and just. and just really capitalizing, you know, on that. So I think that's really important, and you make a really good point. Lori Helsher, you're back, and you want to make a comment on Prop A?
Yeah, thank you. Of course, this minute I wanted to say something, Zoom dropped me, but I'm back. Thank you both for mentioning the Have Send Sales Tax Initiative. We really appreciate you bringing that up. And it's so important to our infrastructure in Cole County. So Brad, Roger, and I are going to be hitting it hard in the next couple of months. And I just wanted to know, wanted to ask rather, if anyone is interested, we're having signs printed now. And if you have a business or a good busy intersection, because it is, a lot of it is about the infrastructure, the roads and bridges. If we could put a sign at your business or in an intersection or address your group, please email me. It's lhelsher@amarin.com, and we'll get you scheduled and we'll get you a sign. Appreciate that, thanks.
Very good. So in speaking to Harry about this Friday coffee, for many years, many years, I've affectionately called Harry Hato. So if you look at his email, it's H. Otto, and it has been even Jeremy at Williams Keepers. You can verify this for me. So I always affectionately called him Hato, and whenever I would call him that out in public, he would get a little bit red. And so I told him in this conversation that, you know, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say Hato because it might just come out because I've called him this for decades. And so I feel like I can tell you guys his nickname now because he put it on his screen. So if you guys look at his screen, it says Hato on there. And so I'm just telling you, I really kind of made that up. And so as you see him around the public, feel free to go ahead and call him Hato. And I wanted him to use that during the campaign, you know, Hato for Western Commissioner, but he didn't take my advice on that. But I still think we need T-shirts, Harry.
Sure.
Okay, so Jeff Davidson is on the line. And so I guess before I go to Jeff, Harry, do you have anything as far as wrapping up from your end? I want Jeff to talk a little bit about some chamber activity. But any kind of wrapping up words of wisdom for our 53 participants that are on the line today?
Well, it's a pleasure to be able to talk to this many folks at one time. Thanks for arranging this, I'm happy to be here. I used to make jokes about the commissioners. I used to make jokes about the Commissioner Day at the Capitol. A lot of them wore bib overhauls over there. And those of you who might hang around the Capitol, the day you see the bib overhauls prominent, it's probably Commissioner Day at the Capitol. And maybe I'll even wear a pair just to enforce that whenever they, if they have that day going forward. And I used to make jokes about the gravel roads, and that's really what the commissioners did, was all about roads. I will tell you that this week, my first week, I had three calls about a pothole. What was the other one? A culvert, no, two, oh, the culvert, even, I had a culvert before I even came here. So I've had culverts and potholes and the road issues. But I look forward to solving those problems because I turned them over to Eric Landwear at Public Works, and he jumps right on that. And then people are very appreciative of reaction. That's what's fun about local government is, you know, you can get things done a lot quicker than you can at the big place. I'm looking forward to these four years. And I expect it to be fun, challenging, frustrating, rewarding, all of those things. And I appreciate all the support I received in the campaign and look forward to serving the citizens of Cole.
I know Public Works is a big part of our county and with the promotion of Eric Landwear, then the new road supervisor that Eric just hired recently, I think it's going to be great for our county. And, you know, to your point, Harry, I think that you bring a lot of professionalism to the office that I know that a lot of the residents will look forward to and will appreciate. And I can't really picture you in bibs, but I would, I think maybe with a T-shirt that says Hato with bibs might be a good combination. But we do appreciate, yeah, think about that. The professionalism and your commitment to our county and for even deciding to run for office. I know that was a big decision for you and your family, and we very much appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, I'm not really seeing any other questions in the chat. So I would like to turn it over to Jeff Davidson just to talk a little bit about the chamber and some things that are, exciting things that are happening on our front. Jeff?
Yeah, big day for the chamber today. So what an excellent platform to have this morning to make an announcement. We have engaged as an executive committee, a search firm headquartered out of St. Louis, but a prolific Midwest search firm for ED and chamber positions to recruit our next chamber CEO. And so we have that job going out today. It'll be posted on our local boards, of course, and posted on the, advertised locally as well. And we're super excited to see that publicized and to start receiving applications and to work through the process with Next Move Group to find a permanent CEO. Missy's done a wonderful job, I heard people brag on her all the time. The staff is bragging on her, too, as she's filling in in the interim role. And so I know that we're all going to be excited to have someone officially titled permanent and in that role. So a big day for the chamber, exciting times. And it's going to be wonderful to get that next candidate identified in the role.
Very good, thank you, Jeff. Mayor Turgeon, I see you're on here as well. I always like giving you the opportunity to talk about anything that's happening in our city. I don't know if she jumped off, now I'm not seeing her. Any other closing remarks? Anything from staff? Susan, I think we made all of our announcements. Again, just in closing, Harry, thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you. And I think I called you yesterday for a five-minute conversation, and we talked for about 60 minutes. So I said you're not going to answer my calls anymore whenever I call you because it's going to end up being a lot longer conversation. But good luck to you, and we appreciate the partnership that we have and going forward for our community.
Thank you.
Any other closing comments? Otherwise, happy Friday to everyone. Enjoy your day, and we will see you at our next Friday coffee. Thank you.